Wasn't it why I can change on the road or?
Um, yeah.
The first question.
Eleanor and Fay used to get all dressed up to walk down. The people's bathroom.
And the living room was for the water was like green or Petering.
Might as well.
I have one that one of them is just.
What's that?
So.
What are you doing?
Get out of here.
So we can send it down to.
Interesting.
God, we say the front row for you.
You guys are.
Name it right now.
They want to show up early.
We did call.
Well, as soon as possible.
I mean, if we're after tenants, because we want the job.
Okay, yeah, that's why I'm taking one of the two.
Because I have audit of.
I wanted the day off to sleep in.
I haven't agenda.
I saw.
I know, but as I have.
I'm really proud of tonight.
I don't want to.
Because it's a lot clearer for me instead of just grant and grant or stuff.
And I took some calls, so I will need it.
And it's clear for the honor.
You had.
Yeah.
People's.
I wanted to be clear.
Yeah, that'll be really good.
Yeah, and I can't.
Tomorrow.
All day Thursday till five.
And then Thursday, Friday, all day till five.
Just part of the.
Yeah, they get there and they keep me until about five, five thirty.
Yeah.
Can I go?
No.
I don't know where.
I wanted the day off to sleep in.
I haven't agenda.
I saw.
Yes, I have.
Who?
I want to be quick too.
Yeah, I did.
It's not a check.
Isn't it really crowded tonight?
Yeah, otherwise it should.
I don't think so.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I did that spreadsheet, not going to email them to you tomorrow, so you can open it up.
Yeah.
I don't want to.
Yeah.
Because it's a lot clearer for me instead of just grant and grant or stuff. And I took some calls, so I will need it.
Yeah.
And it's clear for the honor. You had. Grant and grant.
People's.
I wanted to be clear.
Yeah, that'll be really cool.
Yeah, and I can't.
That's your real.
Yeah, tomorrow. All day Thursday till five.
Thursday.
And then Thursday, Friday, all day till five.
Just part of the.
Yeah, they get here and they keep me until about five, five thirty. And I'm like, can I?
Holy.
No.
Please.
No, I'm just wondering about. And I forgot I just. Because they're going to start.
They can show up a little earlier and sit further back.
No.
It's a two.
I understand.
Under control.
Those ear protection ruffs today, the kind they have the silencer. I might have worn them and I thought, you know, I kind of started hearing that. So I had to keep up with them, so now I have cream, so now I can tell.
I sound like a perfect pair.
Not supposed to drink when you roll, are you?
Frowned on that, save on.
Just started. Everyone read the minutes of the last meeting.
I move that we accept the minutes from the October eleventh meeting and the October fourth and the October twenty eighth meeting.
Second. I'm pretty sure I know what the Rogers Toyota bill was for at $2,000.
I'd still like to hear it out now.
Yeah, I'd like to know for sure.
It was for the, um, Toyota truck.
We have a printout of what they did, so it was everything.
It was everything, it was fluid, everything.
Transmission fluid, differential fluid.
Did they get detailed as well?
They also got detailed. They put new, they had to put a new air filter in the cap because the mice had got in and destroyed the other one. And they also had to put a new air filter in the air filter because the mice had got into that as well. But that's, so.
And it was three hundred and fifty, I think it was last month it was on, on the splash, what?
The splash car wash.
Slash car wash did the detail. I guess they really did a good job.
Yeah, look good.
So we sort of, it wasn't a sole service or, yeah, source decision, it was multiple people bought this needs to be done at the dealer so that everything can be up to par, so.
And the, uh, that bay machinery?
Yeah, that's what that was. Oh, that's, that's back home, um, the, the bucket.
The tractor bucket.
Okay.
That was from what happened?
So when Josh hit the, the post at the store, it bent the bucket, the blade on the bucket.
How about a new tractor?
And so it was attempted to be repaired, but it still bent, and so Dick said that it needs to be replaced, so we missed it. He, he ordered it, got it, everything ready, so, because he can't get it perfectly right again.
Yeah, though I agree.
So.
I move to approve the payables for the month of October.
A second.
I am. I'm not sure what I'm speaking about. We're having a problem with code enforcement, so we need to know, like, the citizens are saying, or, we were under the understanding the citizens are supposed to call you guys, uh, but some of the citizens are saying, you're saying that the city's supposed to call us, but when we call you guys, you say that you want the citizens to call because they have the first-hand experience for life.
What is this regarding particularly?
Uh, there was some, was it noise ordinance or not noise, uh, in fact, some, uh, junk vehicle ordinance and, uh, what was, there was a, was it burning?
Uh, yeah, burning, smells, nuisances. I think junk vehicle was brought up by a council member in the last meeting.
Loose chickens. Didn't she say loose chickens?
Why are my neighbors?
So we just need a little more clarification as far as, like.
It shouldn't matter who makes the phone call, we'll come down and, and deal with it. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, you guys, like, you prefer hearing firsthand from the citizen or, like?
I, I would, I would say so, because mainly they're going to have the best knowledge. I mean, if, if you guys are the ones reporting it, I mean, you're only going to be able to tell, you know, the sheriff's office what was told to you and, well, you won't likely be able to answer any follow-up questions, so it'd probably be best hearing it from the person that's making the complaint.
So that they're not getting any feedback from?
Any feedback from?
From me telling if they call in.
Oh, I guess the, she's, she said that.
Didn't you hear that before?
They weren't getting any feedback.
They weren't getting anything back from them if they were calling in?
Oh, yeah, like, they weren't saying anything, they were saying, okay, and then after they would come check it out or, or any, that's what some of our citizens have said, so we're just kind of curious as to the proper protocol, I think.
I mean, if, if a report is made, I mean, our deputies would contact that person, figure out the nature, what the offense is, and come down and handle it, so I'm unaware that we were having any problems, so I'll definitely pass this on to the sheriff.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something, please. So there clearly is a disconnect, though, and not necessarily on your guys' part. Would it be beneficial for the sheriff's department if the city did play a stronger role in the code enforcement, such as contacting you, such as maybe if residents do call? Because sometimes when residents call a nuisance on their neighbor, they create an enemy for life, and they live with the nuisance until they can anymore, then they complain to a council member or a city, and the city says, we'll call the sheriff's department and so on, and, and every so often, Skiles, Sheriff Skiles comes down and, but the issue persists, and generally it's the same issues that persist, so perhaps there's a way where residents do notify the city and the city takes notes and can pass it on to you guys or how they issue citations or whatever. Is there anything you can think of that would benefit the city playing a stronger role?
I mean, if the neighbor doesn't feel comfortable actually going over and talking with their neighbor and trying to resolve the issue between the two, absolutely. Because I do get, you know, a lot of times there can probably be strong conflicts between two neighbors and they don't want to try to resolve it out themselves, so that probably would be the best course of action.
Okay, so this, what, what role could the city play in that manner if they didn't want to, or if they felt they had a, uh, interaction with the sheriff's department where then maybe they didn't feel it was followed up on and/or they don't think it's enough to call the police, but there's something they just want to talk to the council about and make a complaint, sometimes formally, sometimes not? What, can you think of a role the city could play in resolving that if it doesn't need to go to the sheriff's department?
Can you, can you restate that for me?
Yeah, so should the city, what, what can the city do to play a role if the resident doesn't want to have to contact the sheriff's department?
I mean, the city could also send out a letter of violation to the person that's, that has the junk cars or, you know, as a heads up, like, look, you can't have junk cars, you can't have your, your dogs running at large, you can't allow your dogs to bark at all hours, and doing it as a precursor, the city sending out a letter like, hey, look, here is what the city code reads and you're in violation of it, continued violation of it will result in us taking further enforcement action.
Perfect, all right, thank you.
So I included in, um, your attachments, what Derry does, of their code enforcement, they have hired someone and, um, it says, and making it a little blurb here, they, they pay the person two fifty a month, he works two hours once a week, and, and you can see everything that he does, so that is, that's another thing if council wanted that they could consider doing too, and I would think that would be more along the lines of not a, not a complaint that, you know, where you would call the sheriff's office and have them deal with it immediately, but something like, you know, the, the tall weeds or, or the, maybe the dog that barks a lot, or, or the junk cars or something like that.
Because it says sometimes this has been an effective way to educate people without having to really go into the, you know, calling cops, so I think this is a good idea.
Then it would be somebody that we would have to, you know, hire and pay. Right.
Um, the lady who wrote this bid was referred to us by Jay, um, at BNI Computer, who handles all of our computer stuff, but he doesn't do website stuff, and, um, our website is pretty old and out of date, and you can see what, what she would do to, to make it updated and more user-friendly and, and safer as well. It's, like I said, it's a pretty old website, so I, I think it's a, it's a good idea to have it updated and also to have somebody that we can turn to if we have any issues with our website.
Yeah, because didn't you, like, get locked out or you couldn't post something?
Yeah, there's been a few times I've not been able to update the website, and, and so it would be nice to be able to have somebody who knew our website and I could call and say, hey, would you help me out with this?
Well, I think a up-to-date website really attracts people.
I think so too.
Have you seen Gen C's?
I have not.
It's very pretty, got a lot of, like, community photos and stuff. Um, first step that there is. I think it's a good idea to get it updated, maybe some more.
Is that a motion?
I move to approve the City of Juliette website redesign and update.
A second.
Our council consideration of repeal of Resolution twenty twenty-two over dash one and hiring policy adopted June four, paint twenty twenty-two.
So, um, this issue arose, we, we passed this resolution, um, in June, or, or you did, and, um, when we went to hire Ryan, in reading the resolution, it would have made him have to wait thirty days before he was able to start for council to approve, um, his hiring. So I called up Ty Crimp and I talked to Jim McNaul, who, um, said that that resolution was a really bad idea, it goes against everything that they've ever taught, because it's the mayor's role to hire, not the council's role. If council is hiring, then that makes me more of an appointed employee such as Bonnie and I are. Um, Jim McNaul reached out to Justin Ruin at AIC, who wrote what I forwarded to you, um, citing the code reasons why, um, that particular, the way that resolution was written is, is, is not correct, and it was his opinion that it should be repealed. Now, I did ask, I sent an email to Jim to see if the city should have some sort of hiring policy, but I haven't heard back from him yet, so when I do, I will, I will let you guys all know that too. But it's, it, he, he says it's very clear that the mayor is supposed to make the decision based on qualifications, so, I mean, that just explains, um, Justin's view on the topic.
Well, I feel like, uh, we should have one that Icrimp approves of.
I approve it.
Yeah, so I move to table the consideration of repeal until we get a decision, uh, approved one from Icrimp that is approved by them and approved by our attorney.
If I may, the problem with having this resolution on, on the books keeps us in this same issue, where if something happened and we had to hire somebody else, you know, in a few weeks, we still have the same problem where we have to get a council approval to hire the person which is incorrect.
I'd like to floor for me if I need. So I think the issue here isn't whether or not the mayor has the power to do it, this constitution says he does, he does, or he or she. The issue that I ran into recently in regards to this resolution, as I was reading it closer, is that this resolution says the mayor does have the sole power to interview, to hire, and then notifies the council, meaning all four of us, with an equal vote, who he or she has chosen. So if the mayor picks two of the council members to help him make that decision, then there is no approval process by the council because the approval takes place prior to the council meeting. So I think the real crux here has to do with the process and how it's being administered, not so much with what the resolution says, but if, you know, again, I think we should wait, and, and also, shouldn't we also involve, you know, our city attorney since he wrote the rule?
That's what he said.
Okay. I thought he said Icrimp.
He said Icrimp.
And the city attorney.
Do we need to take, um, Wendy, are you saying that we need to do something about this one now?
She prefers to.
It was Jim McNaul's opinion and Justin Ruin's opinion that this resolution be repealed because the council isn't supposed to have any power in hiring. But if you would rather hear it from them, I can, I can see if I can get more, I mean, Justin wrote it out, but clearly I can see if I can get someone from Icrimp either here or on the phone.
So this is, this is the one he wants, this is what he suggests, or is this the one we wrote up?
This is the one we wrote up that he's saying he's.
The resolution that I attached, that I gave to you is, is the resolution that we already passed, there is no new resolution.
So would it be that we would repeal this one, we would not accept this one, and then we would wait until we get another one from Icrimp and?
Yeah, there is, there is no new resolution, the, the whole thing on, on the agenda tonight is to repeal the existing resolution to avoid this whole council approval of everybody that gets hired, so that's, that's what you, you need to decide. I'm just telling you what, what Jim McNaul told me very clearly and what Justin at AIC told me. But if you want to hear more from them, then I can, I can see if I can get somebody up at the next meeting, or like I said, on the phone at the next meeting.
But I'm just wondering, I don't, I don't understand this, so if we repeal this, we don't have anything, but we still need to wait, maybe we still need to have one made up sometime?
I, I don't know, that's what I'm waiting to hear, I haven't heard anything yet on that yet.
Is there a way of finding out what parts of it they would prefer we repeal?
Just, just what he said, I, I think a lot of it was, was the council approval.
Because what I was reading is specifically was about the thirty days of holding the mayors up from being able to.
That is what I specifically said, but when I spoke to Jim and then what Justin wrote is that the, the council may either approve or disapprove of the mayor's decision, and that right there would make that employee more of an appointed employee, that's how Bonnie and I would be hired, is the mayor would decide, yes, I want you to be the city clerk, and the council says, yes, we agree, or no, we don't agree, that's what makes them appointed.
Well, current city ordinance does say, subject to the approval of the council, so this, resolution was drafted by the attorney to reinforce that without the council overstepping its boundaries, so really.
Where does, where has an ordinance that says that the council approves?
See what happened here, it says, subject to the approval of council, we've gone over that, means.
It says it in the resolution.
It says it in the city ordinance as well. Do you have our ordinance pulled up? E or C shall appoint all officers.
Wait, wait, what area are you in?
Um, two point oh eight dot oh one zero.
Okay. General duties and responsibilities?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, he or she, oh, yep, sent it to the proof of the council.
Does it talk about idle employees or appointed employees?
Well, I can't, I can't talk, I must read the whole paragraph. Read the whole.
The mayor of City of Juliette shall devote so much of his or her time to the duties of the office of mayor as an effi, as an efficient and faithful discharge irrevocably required. He or she shall preside at all meetings of the council and shall have a vote when the course is equally, council is equally tight, and may call special meetings of council when necessary and according to Idaho law. He or she shall appoint all officers and employees of the city, subject to the approval of the council, and have such other powers as provided by law.
So what he's saying is the resolution, well, Icrimp is saying is the resolution contradicts that by the thirty-day notice thing.
The thirty-day notice was the problem, but Jim told me that it was the council approval that was the problem too, so what, can you tell me what ordinance that?
It's under, it's under administration of personnel, two point zero eight, or zero one, zero one zero, under general duties and responsibilities.
Now, I would like to note that, I went back and forth with our city attorney on this a little bit, and he had, he said that the approval might be a little different than what we're interpreting in that ordinance, so I think it's a very important meeting involved, because he's, it's kind of a word salad, because I'm not a attorney, obviously, so, but he was saying that approval might not be so black and white as us saying here, but he did write this in the resolution with the same wording in it, so.
So we probably should just wait until we get somebody from Icrimp and, um, the lawyer that, who approved of?
Yes.
And you moved that, you made a motion for that? Everybody?
I did, there was no second.
A second?
Anderson calls for roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Asses. That makes a report on the police murder meeting at the City of Kendrick.
So recently, Justin, Dick, myself, when I was listening to Stillman and, and, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Zach.
Zach, I remembered your last name, couldn't remember your first name.
It's all good.
Uh, about the struggles that Kendrick is facing with their waste water issues with their lagoons and stuff like that, it was just information for us, they are having trouble finding, uh, it was the land application, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So they just want to.
Yeah, he or she, yeah, sent it to the approval of the council.
Does it talk about idle employees or appointed employees?
Well, I can't, I can't talk. I must read the whole paragraph. Read the whole paragraph.
The mayor of City of Juilliata shall devote so much of his or her time to the duties of the office of mayor as an efficient and faithful discharge irrevocably required. He or she shall preside at all meetings of the council and shall have a vote when the course is equally, council is equally tight and may call special meetings of council when necessary and according to Idaho law. He or she shall appoint all officers and employees of the city subject to the approval of the council and have such other powers as provided by law.
So what he's saying is the resolution, well, ICRIM is saying is the resolution contradicts that by the 30-day notice thing.
The 30-day notice was the problem, but Jim told me that it was the council approval that was the problem too. So what, can you tell me what ordinance that cites?
It's under, it's under administration of personnel, two point zero eight, or zero one, zero one zero, under general duties and responsibilities?
Now, I would like to note that, I went back and forth with our city attorney on this a little bit, and he had, he said that the approval might be a little different than what we're interpreting in that ordinance. So I think it's a very important meeting involved because it's kind of a word salad because I'm not a attorney, obviously, so, but he was saying that approval might not be so black and white as us saying here. But he did write this in the resolution with the same wording in it, so.
So we probably should just wait until we get something from ICRIM and the lawyer that approved of it? And you moved that? You made a motion for that? Have we made?
I did. There was no second.
Oh, second?
Anderson calls for roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Three, two, one, six.
What's that?
Three, two, one, six.
Then raise a report on the waste water meeting at the City of Kendrick.
So recently, Justin, Nick, myself, when I was listening to Stillman and Rose and, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Zach.
Zach. I remembered your last name, couldn't remember your first name.
It's all good.
About the struggles that Kendrick is facing with their wastewater issues with their lagoons and stuff like that. It was just information for us. They are having trouble finding, it was the land application, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So they just wanted us to know that they're having problems with the land application and they don't want to do the eminent domain, which none of us would want to do that either. So they were just kind of telling us what their options are and Stillman provided what the options were for, for the city, for us, if we, you know, decided to go that route. So that's what that meeting was about. We can't make a decision tonight, but if you have questions or something, it's not like, it's not a decision. This is just, we went up there and it was just us, Rose, Jake, and Zach and Stillman and his, what's your partner's name?
Scott.
Scott. So we just heard them out on, you know, what they're kind of facing with all of their problems.
So the City of Kendrick is putting, possibly putting out an RFP for retaining our same engineering firm to help solve their problem because their last engineering firm, the one that was working on their sewer project is not, it's just been going on for way too long and they need to get this project moving. And so that's part of the thing and, you know, they can work with us or not with us. It's no, either way, it's either way. But the possibility of more funding availability, our project has increased in cost due to inflation. And so, you know, the possibility of Juilliata getting more money and Kendrick getting more money is very, very, very good, especially if we have a solution that benefits both towns and doesn't increase sewer rates for everybody, not necessarily Juilliata, but could happen that our rates end up getting, going up as well. But Nick asked a very good question of the mayor of Kendrick and the city council. Why are they just now coming to us in Ken after this already kind of got put on the back burner? And they had a very good answer. Rose is new to the city council. She's new, a new mayor. They have tried their own survey of trying to buy land, the city councilors themselves, and Jake went out to landowners individually trying to find land and they just are not having any better results. So they are already on a variance from the DEQ for their permit just because they're not meeting their ammonia limits and soon they won't be meeting their temperature. So it's, it's, we're trying to open a discussion. I mean, they are with us and we are with them, trying to open a discussion between the two towns if something can be done jointly. So that's basically what.
There would have to be a, if we did decide to move, there would have to be a plan study to see if everything was.
So we're thinking of combining something?
We're not, well, we're not thinking of anything.
I, what, what did you think? What did you think when you were up there?
Well, I thought that they provided a very good.
What did you think?
A very good explanation and presentation, you know, a lot of information.
So we still keep it separate, but we?
Well, I, I didn't make any decisions, I thought, because it has to be in front of our whole council, and I should make that. This is just information.
Mark, you weren't there, Wendy and Vicki, so we're.
Just providing information.
Everybody on board that there was a discussion.
No decisions have been made or?
I think the important part too is because we had the meeting here first with everybody.
That was a plan review for our station.
Yeah, but the thing is, is that they also mentioned that it won't affect.
The timeframe of our project.
Our project.
We're moving closely.
Rose, do you have something to say?
I do. Would you please?
Did we ask you up and have you talk?
I would like to hear it first.
Okay, so here's a couple of extra copies. We didn't make enough for everybody. And I guess the other two are going to just stay seated instead of. Okay, so we're here tonight to present to the Juilliata council the idea of Kendrick connecting to your sewer system and working together on the wastewater. Why? We came to Stanstil with our land application negotiations. Jake met 15 different farmers. We weren't going anywhere. And the options that were given by our engineer was, one, continue with land application with eminent domain, two, doing an addendum, change course, select a different alternative, two B, which was our suggestion, was to check on the feasibility of working with Juilliata, piping to Juilliata and the feasibility of tagging on at your plant. Sue DEQ was number three and claim economic hardship, which at the likelihood of the projected cost the engineer was giving us was $170 for our sewer rate alone. That did include wa, doesn't include water or garbage. So we're in the process of terminating our contract with our engineer. We voted last Thursday at a special meeting, and we're starting the process of an RFP. We thought maybe there was a way we wouldn't have to do one, but to cover all our bases, we are starting the RFP next week. So within a month to five weeks at our, by our next meeting, we moved our meeting in December from the holidays, so we'll be meeting at the same night as you. Then we'll go from there and award the bid and then we have to do a feasibility study.
There's a different word for it, but I'll.
Stillman, put it in there. And so we can't just go with Stillman. We actually have to do a request for proposal project from everybody and grade them on the study, on their process and their proposed project. So once we get that done, then we do the study or whatever it's called.
Report. Report.
The report. And then we're going to go ahead and submit the addendum to DEQ. And in all of this, we hope to make sure our funding remains intact, which is $7.75 million. And then we have, what do we offer? And there's down here on the sheet that they have manpower certification, less subcontracting with the added personnel, there would be four most likely, shared equipment and savings, greater grant resources with the increased population base, electrical costs and manpower shared, perhaps future water distribution. Our wastewater would then be out of the river and piped down into a system versus now it comes down the river and to your system. So we look at it as, as a positive step forward with the support of DEQ and combining the resources. They're very behind the whole thing of combining. Several people have spoken with them. Jake spoke with them. Stillman's spoken with them. Nick?
The, so the other option is that you have to go clear to the Clearwater?
To go past Juilliata or to the Clearwater to Arrow. And so that we're looking at 15 to 20 million on the piping costs alone. So we'd rather keep our money in our community where we all share. So we also have the wonderful ranking of number one for the last 10 years for need, and so that would help us both for more funding because you can always never have enough money for any of these projects. And then if we were to combine, then we would need an interagency aid agreement. Stice and Kuski does it. There's one other place that does it also. And so that's something we have to look into. That's part of the study so that we can understand how this would all work. Do you have anything else to add, Zach? It's hot here too.
I don't know if you know this, but why, why would our rates go up in Juilliata?
Can I, can I touch on that?
Yes.
Please, can I have a few minutes?
Come on up.
I just love to hear myself talk. So. So I, I've, I've been talking with Kendrick as well, talking with DEQ, USDA. As you well know, the funding agencies have been kind of encouraging this for many, many years, but they can't make people do anything. And, and for a while, both communities were working on their own solutions. And at least for a while, it seemed like they both were able, going to be able to do that until they kind of hit a roadblock. So as far as the rates go, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be paying for, your rates would not go up for any improvements that are required for Kendrick's improvements. The funding agencies are very clear about that too. They wouldn't want that to happen either. What they would want to do is they would want to make sure that both communities, as you're doing improvements that benefit your citizens, that they are doing their best with grant dollars and things like that to keep your rates in line with your peers across the state. So when you start hearing talk about $170 a month and things like that, that's when you're not participating in these grant programs. And.
And that was piping to the Clearwater?
Yeah. And, and so, you know, when you're working with folks like USDA and DEQ, they're going to say, okay, your peers are paying about 55 to 60 dollars a month. In fact, I think, I think the peer rate right now for your communities is somewhere around 53 dollars a month. And so what they do is they look at how much loan it would take for your rate to go up to that amount, assuming that you're below it. And then after that, they're going to try and fill in the rest of it with grant. And I say try because they can't guarantee that. It does depend on how much funding they get from, from the government. But in your case, with the funding applications we've been working with you on so far, it's been a lot of grant. It's been 89% grant so far. We're going to have to get more because the cost of everything has come up substantially in the last year for construction. That's an understatement, and that's across the state. But anyhow, what we're talking about doing here with Kendrick is a, it would be a preliminary engineering report for Kendrick. DEQ suggested we don't call it a study anymore because we're not really going back to the study phase. What we're doing is we're looking at alternatives, moving forward with some options for Kendrick to dispose of their water now that they can't do land application. You know, those options are really narrowing down to doing something with Juilliata, taking it to the Clearwater, or upgrading their plant to something similar to what you're doing. All those have a cost to it. There's obviously a lot of support to try and have these communities come to a combined solution. And like the mayor said here, there, there is a lot of excitement on USDA and DEQ's part to help this happen if it is a favorable situation for both communities. This wouldn't necessarily slow down your project. Your project needs to keep moving forward as planned. And we kind of view that as the phase one project, if you will, and there may be a phase two if you end up combining with Kendrick, which would mean let's add some additional capacity. What we're designing for you, your plant is being constructed in a way that you can add additional capacity. It's modular so we can add more to it. We're designing your facility to accommodate the next 20 years of growth in your community. We're not counting on Kendrick yet, but if you, if you were to, that can be added as well. So.
And didn't you say that it probably, it won't, shouldn't affect what we're going to have to take out for a loan, which is the 11%?
You, you would only be responsible for funding improvements that directly affect your citizens. The same with Kendrick. They would be responsible for funding improvements that affect their residents. And so, and like I said, the funding agencies are going to do their best to keep your rates at a good level like they have so far. Same with Kendrick. They've already done a large project. They're trying to move into the next phase of it because they still have some things on their permit that have not been addressed yet. So.
Jake, Jake, do you have any, anything you'd like to say?
Well, they're covering. We really will.
We warmed it up for you. Come on.
I can't follow up that. They said it better than I could.
You have to have licenses like Justin and, and stuff, right?
Yeah, I'm fully licensed across.
You're fully licensed.
Water and sewer?
Yeah. I would have to, Justin has a higher treatment license than me, so I'd have to upgrade that. I have the hours to do so. I just need to test for it. So.
So then we hire, we have somebody, we have Frank and who else? Do we have another one on standby?
Well, Ryan is.
Right.
We have MacDymick who holds our class three water license.
Or even our water treatment, yeah, we're.
Yeah. And you don't have a class three yet?
Not water treatment, but.
Is that what he holds? Is water or wastewater?
Mike holds the water treatment, class three water, because our plant sort of became a class three plant right around the time that Frank left, I think.
And what do you have, Jake?
Just a one, treatment one.
But Bonnie, are we still paying Frank now for sewer? Or because I have my two or not? I don't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we are paying him?
Yes, because I, I think he has water too, but I'm not sure.
He has water.
He doesn't have the three.
But we're not paying for sewer now, right?
Right.
He, he just gets what he gets, whether he's using his water.
He's just getting paid extra right now because he's been helping out since, you know.
Well, it's great.
Oh, you followed pushing. So in the summer of 21, I believe, the council talked about this with you guys. And I wasn't here yet, but at that time, did you say that you guys, there would have to be another bond for Juilliata to be involved in this project?
It depends on the loan amount that you end up taking out in the end. So far, we're below your bonding amount. If we obtain any bonding, or sorry, any loan funding above your bonded amount, then we would have to go out for another bond. Right now, we're considerably below that.
Okay.
Because of how much grant you have.
So with all the inflation, is that going to be a risk for us regardless? As far as like, are we, with the inflation, are we going to have to potentially go back for bond or not?
Well, I, we don't know that yet. It depends on how much grant you're going to be able to get out of these funding applications. We're going to have to do another funding application for you in January. It's actually called a letter of interest to the Department of Environmental Quality to let them know that we have overages on this project because of inflation. And so, and then for USDA Rural Development, we already notified them that you are needing additional funding at the moment. They don't need anything else other than to know that you need it. So Howard basically has you on a list so that when they are looking for funding next year for other projects, they'll put more into your project. And at the moment, he's talking like that's probably got to be grant because of the way that they've done the calculations for your rates. They're going to try their darndest to make sure that every dollar that they do add to the project is grant. DEQ, I'm not 100% certain what, how they're going to be able to respond, whether they're going to get additional money, if it would be non-loan type money or not in the project. Right now, we actually have a little bit more loan than we need based on the USDA funding from DEQ. But actually, now we kind of need it. So, you know, we kind of have to see how everything clears up. And if it looks like the funding is coming back, that your loan does go above your bonding amount, then we can talk then about meeting to do another bond election. Would you add anything to that, Doug?
No.
Nothing to add?
Just, well, we're involved in both communities. Cita is. And so we think and echo it to Stillman saying, all the agencies would like to see, you know, if it's going to work out. I think part of the process is education, understanding what that arrangement would look like. I think the role our association could be helpful in looking at, helping to look at models. And so we'd be supportive of that.
So if we did go for, if we did have to go for bond and Kendrick had to go for bond, is it, are they separate or would they be joint?
Separate.
Separate.
Yeah, because once again, like I said earlier, the financial responsibility is separate for each community. You would not be bonding for improvements for Kendrick's citizens and they would not be bonding for your improvements.
And that's important for the public to understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be very, a very good educational point.
Right. So we, we have to be very clear on like, you know, if it ends up being like they send their flows to your plant and we're adding improvements to your plant, there's obviously going to need to be an agreement in place. There's going to need to be something that very clearly shows both communities that these improvements are being made to take care of Kendrick's flows, which are separate from the improvements that Juilliata has been putting in place for their citizens. So, yes.
So is there any concept or solid idea of where this bike would run? Would it run down the trail? Would it run down the river?
No concepts have been drawn up yet, but that is something that would be evaluated.
The piping to the Clearwater was under the trail.
Yeah.
Or alongside the trail.
It was laying out there, I think.
It was just an alley on top.
Laying on top.
Always. So now it was going to be the bike trail. And so we had lots of runaways that we had to do if we went all the way to the Clearwater. There were tribal and.
I was going to say, so going all that way, there's different counties, states, tribal.
Different counties.
Lot of stuff that you guys would have to go through.
Yeah.
A different permit completely.
Different permit completely.
Which, which I should also add that if Kendrick were to be added to your treatment facility, it will, you're, you're up for a new permit next year anyways, but. But they will have to take another look at your permit, and based on my discussion with them today, they're not anticipating changing anything on that, other than just kinda recognizing that it would be higher flows. But based on your treatment plant and its ability to treat ammonia, you would not see an ammonia limit added to it like what Kendrick currently has. We, we might see a difference in how we're treating for temperature, just because we're adding more wastewater flow into the river at one spot instead of two. But yeah, those are all things that are gonna have to be determined as well.
Go ahead, and DEQ go first this time?
Thanks. So, I, I know you haven't gotten into the specific, specifics or anything yet, but would they, would they still use their lagoon system and then we would get the wastewater after that?
Potentially.
Or would we just be getting straight Kendrick wastewater?
Based on my conversation with DEQ today, a hundred percent. Yes, because one of the things that we were talking with Jake about is Kendrick's system at some times of the year has spikes in their flow. We would not want those spikes to be heading through your plant. We would want to equalize those flows, and so their lagoons are optimal for equalizing flows. That's how they use them for themselves already. So yes, their lagoons would still be used under that scenario, if it would be necessary.
So, it's getting treated.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and, and so it would also, 'cause right now theirs gets wasted into the pile box as well, right? And then it comes down to our water treatment plant. So if we.
And that's what the mayor referred to earlier, she was saying.
We would be out of.
You, they'd no wonder be discarding upstream of your surface water plant.
Oh, not a bad thing.
But I would also add that in this scenario, I wouldn't see any reason for Kendrick to have to disinfect their wastewater once it comes out of the lagoons. You should just be able to pump it to Juilliata without it being disinfected, because it's gonna have to go through your treatment process anyways, because of their inability to treat ammonia.
So Justin, when we waste or whatever, it's after the treatment plant, right? We're not just dumping. So like, if theirs came, would be treated before we waste?
Right, it would be treated into, it would go into the air, the Clearwater and the air age, erosion tank and all that and get treated, just like, I mean, we get.
Just like ours.
Well, we get infiltration now, 'cause we have leaks in our main sewer main, so it's just like rainwater coming in, or it would be, just like you have, you know, extra liquid coming in, it would all just get treated together and then, yeah, processed.
It, it, it would still be wastewater though, without it being disinfected, it, yes, it's gonna have less total suspended solids and things like that because of some of the settling it has. But we're also, it depends on the time of year. The time of year that they have extra flows, you're gonna equalize in the lagoons, the time of the year that they don't, a lot of that's just gonna flow right through and then pumps directly into your system. And you really don't want it to be completely treated wastewater anyways, because, you know, you wanna keep the biology of your plant going the way that it needs to be going. And like I said, because you have a mechanical plant and they don't, you have the ability to treat ammonia with the nitrification process that you get. And that's something that their wastewater needs before it discharges, so that we don't have to worry about that best ammonia limit. Which is one of the main reasons that they have been really trying to get land application to work, because then they don't have to worry about ammonia limit. So, I, I think that's one of the reasons that they were really hoping that that one would work out.
Because we have the lowest ammonia limit in the state of Idaho.
Yeah. Number one in multiple categories, right?
Yes, number one and number two.
Number one and number two.
Both of those, yes.
I mean, it may not be a coincidence that it's because our water treatment plant is just downstream that the one limit's so high for them, right? And if you're putting ammonia in the water, you can taste it and smell it.
Yeah, it's really just a product of their lagoon system. I, I mean, what, what they got on their permit is coming to every other lagoon system in the state.
Any other questions?
Thank you guys for coming.
Sure. So, just, you guys, you know, thank for that.
Okay, so, first of all, I apologize for sounding nervous when I should've just asked Rose up in the first place, instead of trying to. It's a lot of information. So, the new duck truck is here with the blade on it, and Nick told me that the spreader is supposed to be here next week. Not here, but he'll have to take the truck to Spokane and do that and bring it back. The chains came in today, and so we got those ready to go. We looked at seat covers and we narrowed it down to see the, a style and a price. They're really not as cheap as we thought they were gonna be, they go all the way up to four hundred dollars, I don't wanna spend that. Anyway, we found some seat covers that we're looking at. I don't know if anyone's aware or not, but the sweeper on Monday had a little problem. So, one of the, we think it's an injector, a fuel injector on the motor, but it was putting out raw diesel out of the exhaust and smoking like a smoke bomb. And so Jake had Curry Construction come get it yesterday on a boat boy. They took it down to the diesel machine shop in Lewiston, they're gonna look at it and fix it for us. So, they came out and they actually sent a person out within the hour that he called to look at it. So, we'll let everybody know what's going on with it, how much it costs, all that kinda stuff. The other thing, most, you guys have been working on lights at the park, we got the snowmen up this week, and we've got the city lights for town. We've been putting all new white bulbs in, we ordered three new cases, they just got here today. So, we're working on that. I haven't really introduced Ryan, but Ryan, you wanna stand up? Ryan is our new city maintenance person, and he lives in Moscow right now, but he is looking at moving down here as soon as possible. And he does have his CDL license, and he also had his sewer convenience licenses, which he can read and stay pretty easy. So we're really lucky that we found somebody that's got some qualifications and some experience, and, and he has some things to add when it comes around to him too.
The only thing I have is, I had people in town, not too many, but some people have been asking when we're gonna get the walkway bridge on this.
Never.
You know, and so, we went to Lewiston today, and my husband and I said, if I was just driving, I would stop at the road department. He said, do you want me to stop? Yes, I do. So I went, and I went in there and I talked to him, and of course, nobody knew anything.
No.
No, they don't know anything. Karen Kirk's son works in there, and so he helped me get some names of the places, of people that I could even find out. And I said, well, they left it wide enough, it should, you know, be something, and they could, but it, he said that it's because we didn't have an existing walkway to the, and I said, well, in Kendrick, they don't have a walkway to that bridge. So why did that one begin? He said, well, it's just, it's closer because of the trail. I said, but the trail ends there before it goes across the highway. So they were gonna look into it and see, but he said that he thought it would be up to the, the city, we'd have to put like a rail or something across that.
That was never brought up at the meeting.
No.
No, he said it was gonna be.
They said it was.
That's what I told him.
But you specifically asked him.
I told him that separately, but they.
Well, it's not building speed bumps already. Last, last Tuesday, I attended the City of Genesee council meeting, and they were talking about solid waste. Amanda was there, Leitok County Commissioners were there, and it was a very interesting meeting. Genesee said they have had no problems with inland north waste, which I found very interesting, because we've had a lot of problems with inland north waste. And it did come to my attention after hearing some of the verbiage from our letter to the county commissioners when they were talking to Genesee, that the county has decided to put out a soft proposal right now. So they've sent out letters to a bunch of garbage communities, hoping to get feedback from, and it sounds like that maybe they are going to. They didn't say for sure, but they are gonna get their lot letters back from those other companies and, and see. So it sounds like maybe they might be going in the direction of, at least, you know, putting it up a bid or something. And the city attorney for Genesee said the Sunshine had contacted her and wanted to make sure that if it did go out, that they were notified. So, some of our, you know, I think that's, is a good, good thing, so I was very happy to hear that they are at least now pushing for a better rate for us. So that was good news, so that's a, I think that's a win. I did not make it down to the park last weekend, some other things have come up, but hopefully Saturday, I'm gonna plan on going down and hopefully getting up in around nine o'clock, see if I can get some things finished up at the park there.
How much more do we have to do down there?
Well, I think, well, you were doing the, you were working on the gazebo, 'cause that was all that was left, was the gazebo. So the gazebo is done, so we just got the extension cords.
Yeah, that's the main thing, the extension.
Yeah, and if we wanna do some lights on the dugouts, I was in Moscow. I do have some of that cord left, but they, and Coleman Building's fly does have some of those lights, if we want to do those or if we wanna, if we can figure out something different. 'Cause all the lights for the backstands ended up in the trees, which I think are gonna be better.
I think they're gonna be really nice.
The trees should be, should be very nice, so. But yeah, it was a very interesting meeting in Genesee, and they do things definitely a lot different than we do, but at least somebody's not having problems with inland north waste. That's all I have.
Malcolm?
Hey, Brian, it's you. You got anything to say?
So, we, excuse me, we got the fluids in the backhoe all up to par. We also pushed back the burn pile for the brush. And checked all the gauges on the backhoe and got it all ready to go for winter, so it's all buttoned up.
Okay, thank you.
No. Can I move to the jury?